I call this meeting to order. This is the regular Northfield School Board meeting. It is Monday, February 25th, 2013. Dr. Richardson, there were a couple of things in our table file.
Yes, all of these items are personnel items. We've got several appointments, a couple of leaves of absence, and also a resignation/retirement at the end of this year. Much needed to be acted on as part of the consent agenda.
All right. If there's no objection, we'll add these to the agenda as we move forward. All right. We're ready to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? All right. We will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from the previous school board meeting from February 11th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Ann. Seconded by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Announcements and recognition.
Okay. I'd like to offer the opportunity for Pam to and Erin to share their information first, and then I have a page worth of announcements because we have lots of other good things going on too in the system. But I know the big deal from last Friday was the presentation to all three of our elementary buildings. So Pam and Erin will be sharing it.
Yeah. Friday was a very exciting day here in Northfield. All three of the elementary schools, we started out at Sibley at 8:00 AM and then Greenville Park at 9:30, and then Bridgewater at 7:00 in the evening. All three of the elementary schools were awarded the Healthier U.S. School Challenge Silver Award, which is a voluntary USDA program that, of course, like any great USDA program, has a lot of requirements involved. And one of those, there's really three key components to the award. Making significant changes to provide healthier school meals for children throughout the school day, nutrition education in the classroom at every level in the school district, and then focusing on also physical activity and education opportunities and keep kids active with not only PE but recess and activity breaks throughout the day. So we are very proud that our schools accomplished that and were awarded. Each school has a plaque that looks like this that's going to be hanging hopefully proudly in near the principal's office to recognize the accomplishment, as well as a banner. There's a banner on the outside of Sibley School right now, and I think they're on the inside at both the other elementary schools, recognizing them as a healthier U.S. school and meeting the challenge. There's over 700 school districts, public and private school districts in Minnesota, and out of that, only 17 school districts have been awarded this award. So it was a great opportunity. It's a great opportunity for those, you know, elementary, our elementary schools to get the recognition for all the great things that they're, they have been accomplishing. And we're just going to show a short video relatively speaking, I guess about four and a half minutes, Matt said, from Greenville Park.
Hi. Linda, thank you so much for being here and happy to be here with everybody. I am Hannah, Director of Child Nutrition here in Northfield. And I'm going to introduce Hannah Bilkin, who's the Supervisor of the Minnesota Department of Education, who's going to give you a brief summary. But I just really want to say that this was a total comprehensive award for your entire school. You can see your two gym teachers up here, Mr. Giselle and Ms. Worf. I hope that everyone would be a huge help without the nutrition education curriculum at elementary, but also want to give a round of applause. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Grant, and you have a great child nutrition team here at the school. Very, very green. Linda.
Look at the place.
My name is... I'm Beth. I'm here as your Principal, won't you? I don't want to call that. My phone's ringing too loud. I'm pretty good at it. My name is Debbie, and I came from St. Paul today, and it was 80 miles in snowstorms, but I want to see you because it's really, really, really important. And this award that your, I thought it was daughter and son, my son calls it, I'm trying to say it, that is called Fickers. Miss Mom, do you know the Fickers? I guess yes, I know the Fickers. Because your Fickers and your teachers and your principal and all your administrative staff did something really, really cool. And that's something Debbie's seen in a long time. Do you know who are friends of the United States? Okay, you're a little bit of a hard question. Do you know who has white lips? And she's got this really cool program called the Healthier, or it's probably called Let's Move. She has a Let's Move campaign. And this award that your folks and your teachers and your administrative staff and your principals and the nurse and the school board members and all of those people, they put their heads together to apply for this award, and you know what it took, almost two years to apply for it. And there's 700 public schools and nonprofit schools in Minnesota, and you know that only 17 are getting this award. So you guys at your school are one of those schools that won 700. What I'm going to show you now is two things. I want Mrs. Pop to come up, and I want Ms. Cece and Ms. Sophie and Ms. Riffa and Ms. Sandy to come up. And there was a lot of other people too that were involved, but I'll just not get to the word. This is a more program that I have to, here's that back medical one. And you have a security school too. Your school will get a check for 1,000. Okay. Kind of great issue on our work copy. Okay. I'll return back here. Awesome. We're calling it a wrap.
So I guess that's it. I don't know if anybody has any questions or... It was an exciting day.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Amazing work.
Okay. I do have just a few other announcements this evening. Like a whole page. First of all, congratulations to Deb Baki. Deb is one of 39 semifinalists for the Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. Selection panel of 25 community leaders chose those semifinalists from an initial field of 135 candidates from across the state. That panel will be meeting again in late March to select 10 finalists from the group of semifinalists. The current Minnesota Teacher of the Year will announce her successor at a banquet on May the 5th. Deb, as you know, is a first grade teacher in Companeros at Greenville Park Elementary School. So again, congratulations to Deb. She's moving forward in the process as a semifinalist. Next, we'd like to announce that Kyle Rudolph, a football player for the Minnesota Vikings, is scheduled to visit Bridgewater this Friday morning. So any of you that really feel in need for more purple, the option is there. Will be visiting during breakfast time as part of Bridgewater's Award for the Breakfast Challenge in conjunction with Fuel Up the Place 60. And so that was part of the special award that they received was being able to have a Viking team member be out at their school. For the 19th year in a row, the Northfield German students participated in the National German Exam Competition. Competing this year were 34 students in Level 2, 3, 4, and 5. And this year, many of our Northfield students placed very well. Congratulations to David Stenzel, who achieved the Bronze Award by scoring at or above the 70th percentile nationwide. Students receiving the Silver Award by scoring at or above the 80th percentile nationwide are Martha Barth, Dimitri Bibi, Curtis Boebert, and Daniel Thompson. And the Gold Award is given for placing above the 90th percentile and advances the students to the award level competition. This involves writing a short essay in German and also an oral interview also conducted in German. Gold Award students this year are Addison Langston, Cecilia Krizda, Elizabeth Thorty, Danica Simonette, Jake Reba, and Anika Hodo. Interviews will be conducted on March 2nd at the College of St. Benedict. Good luck to them as they continue on in the competition. Congratulations to all the students who participate in the competition for job well done. Our Northfield Middle School speech team also had a great season. 25 Northfield Middle School students traveled to area schools on Saturday morning, hosted a meet on Saturday, February 2nd. Altogether, 10 schools and over 400 students participated in the South Metro League. Northfield students chose to participate in categories of humorous and serious poetry and prose, dramatic duo, creative expression, great speeches, and storytelling. Tournament on February 2nd, Northfield was a big success thanks to the students who helped with preparations and the parent volunteers who were there. Team is coached by Denise Halverson and Marilyn Neville. Also, congratulations to our sixth grade orchestra from Northfield Middle School. They performed with Minnesota Music Educators Association Midwinter Clinic on Thursday, February 14th. Music teachers conferences held each February at the Minnesota Convention Center. The orchestra students assisted Harry Shade, a nationally known string clinician, by demonstrating playing techniques in a string technique book to the audience of string educators. Their participation at this clinic was a service to Minnesota string teachers and a rich educational experience for each of our students. Also, we'd like to congratulate Linda Odo, Youth Development Coordinator for Me Services, who's been nominated to the Mentoring Partnership of Minnesota Board of Directors. The Mentoring Partnership of Minnesota formed in 1994, a community initiative to promote mentoring for Minnesota youth. Mentoring Partnership of Minnesota leads the state's mentoring movement to ensure youth and mentors have access to high-quality mentoring experiences. So congratulations to Linda. And finally, just a little bit of good news on the home front for our high school co-curricular programs this past week. First of all, the Science Olympia Varsity Team placed second in regional competition, so they will be moving on to state on March 9th. The Mock Trial Team had two teams in region semifinals, with one team making it to the region finals. The Raider Speech Team finished first out of 21 teams at the Red Wing Invitation. Northfield High School had three Nordic skiers in the state meet that was held on February 14th. They were Wolf Olstad, Lee Hansen, and Miles Brodsky. The Alpine Team had one skier advance to state. That skier is Hannah Bowman. Also, congratulations to the eight wrestlers who placed in the section tournament. Matt Metcalf and Carson Kennedy qualified for the state wrestling tournament. Also, our Gator Boys Swimming and Diving Team improved over last year's Section 1 AA finish, finishing fifth at this year's finals, posting 20 lifetime best performances for members of the swim team. And finally, our gymnastics team had a spectacular showing at the state tournament on Friday night, placing second place and only behind the first place team by .375 of a point. Congratulations to all individuals who competed on Saturday, but especially to Bailey Dupé for being the all-around state champion gymnast. So congratulations to students across many of our buildings for the great work that they're doing.
Board members, any other announcements or recognition? No? All right. I think we're ready to move on to our first item for a report. I think we have Greenville Park up.
We shift gears from one celebration to another.
Turned up, but last year the volume wasn't adequate, so I mentioned... We'll go back off. Play on the volume.
This looks potentially Academy Award-winning. I see we have the mountain and...
Yeah, I had a lot of choices. There were a lot of I movies. So, well, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm here to talk a little bit about PLCs that wants to get at Greenville Park. Tonight, we're going to have our kindergarten PLC present to you. What I plan on doing is, you can see down the bottom or middle of the page there, it's only 19 minutes and 37 seconds long, so, but it'll be fairly adequate. It shows you the rigor that our kindergarten teachers go through. And what this will really highlight is one of their essential learnings instead of everything that they do. So that you can see how much work was it... I mean, there's many essential learnings, you know, in reading across the board in terms of early literacy, and same thing for math. And so I thought I'd do this year just a little bit different would be to show you the focus that they put on one and the level of conversation that they have about, you know, helping students achieve their SMART goal for kindergarten, and that is for every child to be at Level 2 by the end of kindergarten. To be proficient at kindergarten at the end of the year, you have to be at Level 2. So without further conversation from me, I'm just going to hit it and hopefully catch that volume before it blows away. And my kindergarten team is here tonight to field your questions, and they are the experts and the stars of our show, so I'll get going right away.
Since we will increase the reading level, all kindergarten students, so that 100% demonstrate a Level 2 or higher as measured by the DRA by end of year. And we just finished doing our DRAs, so we are looking at the number of students in each classroom that are Level 2 or higher out of our total of our students, so we can get a percentage point of how we're doing on this school as of February 13th. There we are. So what we need to do then is add these up and add those up.
Of all kindergarteners in Greenville are reading at a Level 2 or higher as of February 13th, and that's our end of year goal. So when we're looking at our students then, 68% of them, we will just continue to read with them and push them forward so that they can get as high as they can already in grade. And then we're looking at at least 32% of our students, we need to dive into a little bit more to see if what we're doing is working for them, they just need more time, they're not on track, or if there are students that are missing key... Essential skills then. For literacy, we have our essential learning that we sit on the side, and the way we have it is that the concepts will be introduced according to our schedule here, but they continue throughout the whole year. So we never teach something and then let it go. We always reinforce it throughout the whole school year. And the essential words we have listed here, but these are the skills that we feel are foundational in order to be able to reach a Level 2 or higher on the DRA. So these are the skills that a student will need to be able to accomplish their goal. So, for example, letter ID, letter sounds, high-frequency words, classes of print, blending sounds, and it goes on from there, with writing, writing words. Our next step will be to look at specific student names in our classroom and determine by either observation or other assessments that we have, if what we're doing is working for them, is they're on track, they just need more time, or if we feel like there's some essential skills that are missing here that we really need to target for them to be able to get back under. So we will then start to match students with... 32%, we decided that that was a total of 29 students out of all of our classrooms. We talked about 20 students who are, we need highly intensive remedial for, on those essential skills.
That's a recipe. So I got it down to 18 minutes.
In our data retreat, we have all lunch with our list of students and all of the data that we've collected, so that many assessments that we've done, a lot of formal assessments, a lot of similar assessments also, and we sat down with our RTI coaches. And then they went through all of the students that we are concerned about that have not met the scores, the appropriate scores. And we went through and they categorized all the students, all of our each of our own students, according to colors. Green were the ones that had met their goals and that we were not concerned about because they seemed to be on the way. The yellow were the iffy category, they're doing well, but they need that encouragement to keep going. And then we had the red category, which were the students who are not meeting the goals at this point there and not where they should be. And those are the students that we focused on in the data retreat. They asked us what we're doing to meet their needs, what we can do, what support they can help give us in terms of providing interventions and how we can manage to meet that. So it was very individualized for each student.
And you know what's different with you too, it's something that just came to me that along with our essential learning, we also have some of our students that are doing intervention. So some of them are already working towards that goal, and they already have an individualized plan based on their...
So then the conversation would be, you have your data retreat, right? All right? So you've already thought about those kids, and you already have a plan?
Yeah. And a lot of them have moved from, you know, beginning of the year, we were doing a little bit first sounds. But some of my students have now come in the green and have gone into reading corps and exited reading corps. And I've chosen to continue to progress monitor some of my students that were in the green, but progress monitor them without giving an intervention for a few weeks on something different, you know, not as non-sense word fluency as well as non-sense word. Probably now it's time to use, since they're special to know most of their sounds right now. So I'm going to monitor their progress for a couple of weeks and see if they continue to make progress towards that goal and not then go back and start an intervention towards working for that goal.
In our particular group, all of the students that are in the red have been on intervention since the fall, with exception of one who's been, was on, went on, and went back on again. So we already had them in our radar just through either assessments that we've been doing along the way, to report cards, and those kinds of things. But it's good to have another set of eyes look at them because they might have new ideas for a different intervention that we can try or something, something new that we can try. Because the students, the majority of the students, well, we're talking about five students really, five students who are on interventions for most of the school year, four of them are making progress, but it's very small. So then the question is, is that the appropriate intervention for them, or is there an intervention that will be gathered? Or is that the growth that we just need to continue with? So I guess that will be the development.
Yeah. And I thought the data retreat was really eye-opening for me because we used our dibbles to assess the reading, the benchmarking of the dibbles. Our conversations went really well, and we saw on our screen what students we were implementing interventions with, what interventions we were implementing, and some students we were just monitoring their progress.
First time I can confidently say that the students that I have that are not at a Level 2 yet, I feel confident that they can get there because of the progress monitoring that we've been working, just watching them make that grow.
That's got to be a good feeling.
It makes it feel doable, rather than just like a number of, oh, 30% of the students have beaten, you know, what's going on? We have a plan, and you can implement the plan, and you have some assurance.
How was it determined who to move on to segmentation versus the...
Pone and segmentation and nonsense words.
Nonsense words. Okay, between those two.
We decided what intervention was going to happen. So was it going to be letter sounds, segmenting, or blending? Blending is usually the first intervention you can do, then you move to segmenting and letter sounds together. So most of my students who were picking up that intervention, the pone and blending, were getting monitored their progress on first sound fluency. They were showing great growth, so my students moved to the next level. So now we're segmenting, working on letter sound, and I'm assessing nonsense word fluency.
So then we would go back to them in this step, which is the...
Segmenting and letter sounds. Yeah.
But I think for some of mine, it's way down to letter recognition, because if they don't, they can't associate the sound to the ear. So I do have some there, even for the back on the...
So then just, you just...
You have to go to...
Do that, is all you do, is blending.
Do that, all you do, blending.
Okay, Gary, so today you're going to practice blending sounds to make words to help you become an even better reader. I'll tap the cube as I say each sound in the word. And I slide my finger under the cube, you'll say the whole word. Okay, so I'll route for you how to blend the sounds and I'll give two words. So my turn. S am, Sam. Yep, my turn, one more time and then it'll be your turn. R am, ram. You know, your turn. S am.
Sam.
R am.
Man.
R an.
Man.
S am.
Man.
K n.
Man.
W s.
W i.
Daniel, now can you point to those sounds, say it nice and loud?
E. E.
Very good, nice job. Okay, now point each sound for me and then slide it.
Okay. A.
Okay, yep, let me ask you one.
K. A. N.
Okay, do that middle sound for me one more time.
Okay. A. N.
Yes, that's right. Now, can your garners remember that when we do this, we're listening, okay? Because we need our listening ears right now. I want you on board to write the word cat. And you can make the three sounds as you're writing the letters if you need to. Now change one letter in cat to make it say can. One letter to make it say can. So now, put your finger under the first letter and let's make those sounds in order. Here we go. Now slide your finger under and say the word.
Can.
Now I want you to make the word can. Sweetheart, don't worry about the cat, just work with us. Make can say pan. Make can say pan. Sam, look at the letter P up there. Okay, are we ready? Put our finger under each of those letters to make their sounds. Here we go. A. We're going to do it one more time for Kayla, because we need her to do it with us. Here we go. A. Now slide your finger. Now look at your word and make change one letter to make it say pin. Make it say pin. Good. We changed the A to. Good. Let's make each sound, here we go, fingers under. I. Pin. Uy, muy bien. This is a chulo, es una. Pa. Pa. Na. Pa. Mama, eso puede ser una palabra, ¿ver? Primero busca una palabra, un dos, un dos cartas y vamos a hacer una palabra. Lueca, una palabra tonta. Pe me. Okay, saca dos y vamos a hacer una palabra tonta. Uno. ¡Ay, por la vida! ¡Tino, muy bien, qué tienes, ma chico! ¡No, muy bien, qué tienes! ¡Uy, estoy bien, eso es qué tienes! ¡Uy, muy bien, es qué tienes! Excellent. Now, what letter is this?
D.
D, and the D says duck, like dog. All right, boys and girls, hands to your left, put your letters at the bottom of your board and put your hands to the left and I have me. We are going to be making letters today and making words. When we make a word, you make the word and you put it on the top of your board and then we wait for everybody to be ready to move on to the next one. When you're waiting, your hands on your left. And then we're going to ask us to do something else. Then you fill in the letters and then you wait with your hands on your left. And at the end, if we finish, we can play with the letters. All right. Let's take two letters and make the word at. We are at school, at.
At.
At, let's try make at, Gavin. Very good, at. We are at, cool. Now, take the t away and add a different letter to make and. I ate an apple, and. Good, very good. Hmm, and, good. I ate an apple. Now, we're going to leave these two letters and add one of these letters and make the popcorn word, and. I like apples, and. A man. What letter do you need to make this word, and, Gavin? We need to make this and. And. Good. I like how Kelly's putting her hands on her left, and.
Okay, so what you just had an opportunity to see is how they pursue just one of their essential learnings. If you notice as we're scrolling down on that chart earlier where they have their essential learnings and the pacing schedule is actually in there as well, you'll have noticed that blending was one of those skills, you know, uh, concepts, print, and that sort of thing were there as well. What we focused on today was phonemic blending. It seems obvious, you know, this is, you know, the kids have to have. And one of the things that we'd, I hope you'd see is that, you know, for, to some degree, it's part of the kindergarten curriculum, but when kids don't master it, that actually becomes an intervention because if you can't master this skill, even as an intervention, you're not going to be able to move forward. So in kindergarten, it's a little bit different. So uh, so you can field some questions this way. I'd like to introduce my kindergarten team. This is Kathy Flechek, come on up, Kathy, come on up. You guys, sorry. This is Debbie Hager and Whitney. This is Jessica Jessen, this is Michelle Morales and Asha. And if you have some questions, I'm going to let the stars answer the questions for you.
Okay. Board members, questions? Julie?
Um, I have a question. First of all, thank you um for the presentation and the wonderful video. Um, you know, as a board, we're, we're um allowed the opportunity to see results of P L Cs directly. And I guess I'd like to believe that it's become part of our district culture, but I'm continually surprised by parents who want to continually challenge the value of P L Cs and the late start. And I'm just wondering how you communicate the work that you do in a P L C because, to parents. Because I think sometimes they think you just have this time to do this and we know you don't if you didn't have the opportunity for a P L C. So I'm wondering if there's um a way that you do communicate that some of the things that you're doing and the results that you see are a direct result of the work that you've done in your P L C.
Well, I can just say that one way that we communicate to the parents is through our newsletter. We might tell them what we're working on as a result of our P L C. Another way is on our report card, we actually communicate to them what our essential learnings are and, you know, what we're working toward. So we do try to keep that open um and let parents know. Carrie knows because she's just one of our wonderful volunteers that comes to Greenville every Thursday to help with it. And she sees the need. Um, I wish parents could come more often so that they could see the wonderful things that we prepare for our volunteers or that, you know, we're working on in our classroom ourselves with the children. Um, communicating it to parents is a little tricky only because um we, we don't hear from all the parents. So what we do at conferences, we also try to communicate what our P L C is working on at conference time because that's one time when we're meeting with all parents.
Okay, I think that's great. I think the more intentional we can be about communicating that to the result of the opportunity and the time you've had in a P L C is, is really good. Thank you. Carrie?
Um, I just want to say, I mean, I do, I get to come in every Thursday and I work with all the kindergarten classes. And for me, it has been um so eye opening to see the different things that the, the teachers come up with for me to do. And it is directly, you know, in our P L C today, we, or on Wednesday, we talked about this. And so this week, these are the things we have prepared for you. Um, that has been just an incredible eye opener for me to see in just this really, really tangible way, um, the very specific things that you're planning for your volunteers to do. And then, you know, to be in the schools and see it all over the school, all the different um volunteers and the Americor or whatever they are. You know, um, those folks who are there also helping. It's, it's really, really amazing. But I think it, it um, you know, we have so many people who want to volunteer in the schools. To be able to make that kind of really intentional use of the volunteers' time is so valuable. And that's, that's what I really see coming out of the, the P L Cs.
Other questions or comments?
I have one question on the Spanish immersion kindergarten. I'm just curious as to how that's been going. Um, you know, would it be the third year, partway through this third year or second year that that's been offered and?
Um, I can speak a little bit to that. I'm one of the co-teachers in that classroom. Um, I'm wondering how much you want me to go into it? It's quite a, it's a whole, this might be a whole presentation. I don't know. Um, and what do you mean exactly by how is it going, which part specifically?
Well, we were, I guess the, the hope was that by offering the children this, this opportunity that by gaining a literacy in their native language that it would help um the students that were really most at risk. So maybe just the high level, how, how you're seeing that, um, you know, is that hope being realized? Is, I'm sure there's some challenges that weren't anticipated, but.
Right, I think that there's been a lot of benefits that have come out of it and also some challenges that have come out of it as well. Um, when the program was originally conceived, it was to address certain challenges. And one of them was that we have students who are coming in with very limited English and it's very difficult to spend a year in kindergarten not understanding what's happening around you, not being able to communicate with your peers, trying to learn curriculum that's new in language that you don't understand yet. So um that issue, for example, is, has really been a benefit because we have students who come in, they have peers who speak their language, they have teachers that speak their language, and they can get right down to the business of learning the, the standards, the kindergarten standards. So that's been a really, really, really nice for the students and for the teachers to just see them blossom that way. The other uh part I think that's been extremely positive is all the um, some things that you can't exactly measure with an assessment, but it would be the parent involvement that we've seen. We have parents every day in our room that come through and talk to us and check on the kids, they come for the activities that we have. Um, we write all our newsletters and notes in Spanish, so they're able to read them. Or if they don't read them, they can call us and ask us directly about it. Um, we have uh parents who have started being involved in our classroom. And even when a student moves on to a classroom that has more English in another grade level, they've continued to volunteer in the school. And so some of those benefits um can't be measured necessarily, but uh it's been really good. And we've had other challenges. And so I think um administration is looking at some changes to be able to address the challenges that we've had. But those are a couple of the benefits that we've seen.
Great, thank you, that was really helpful. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for such a thorough presentation. It's, we really look forward to the P L C presentations and getting to have this kind of bird's eye view of what's going on in your P L C. And um thanks for opening the doors for that.
And we'd like to thank the board for having the vision for P L Cs and giving, because we know the importance of it, not only for us, but more importantly, for our students. We just want to give our heartfelt thanks to all of you for allowing us that time.
Yeah, I think it piggyback on what you said. I think part, the, the beauty of having the time of P L C and really the, the guidance of the process of P L C is when we're in the habit of every week we get together and we know that every week we're going to be either looking at data or we're talking about kids, or we're looking at the interventions that match up with certain skills, then it just becomes part of our everyday conversation. It becomes part of the, not only during P L C time, but other times as well. Or if we're looking for things on the internet, we're going to be looking for interventions or we're looking for things that we can share. And so without the P L C time, you always have it kind of swimming in your head and you want to share it with your colleagues or you, you want to have a direction, but it's just not, the process isn't quite there. So with the P L C, we're given, the process is clear through the P L C process, but we're also given the time to have that conversation. And then it just becomes part of the culture in the school. So that's really, really beneficial for kids.
Great, that's terrific. Thank you so much. All right, we are ready to move on to our second item for discussion, which is the proposed timeline for the global calendar and schedule, which board members usually had in your packet handout.
Okay, and basically this proposed timeline is, is really helping us to kind of take a look at the next several months through the end of this school year to think about uh the, again, that stepping back and taking a global view of the current calendar and schedule and beginning to have interaction with our community about uh what are the issues that are part of that process? And are there things that we might look at doing differently that would reflect how participants believe would be in the best interest of kids in learning? And so to do that, we've already begun to do some pieces. Uh, we have sent out a Skyler to all of our parents. Uh, we have sent out a specific email to all of our individuals who made comments to you as individual board members. Uh, and again, in both cases, inviting them to be involved in this process. And uh so our hope is that parents and staff and community members who want to be involved and want to begin to talk about uh what might be some strategies for taking a look at the calendar and determining if there are any changes that people would like to consider. We want to have them have that opportunity to come and to meet and to have a chance to reflect on that. As part of that process, we've indicated in this document, we've identified a facilitator to provide support for those discussions. And Mary has graciously volunteered to take that on as Director of Teaching Learning. And especially reflecting the fact that the potential impact of this discussion really is about instruction and the retention of learning. And so we really see the importance of having that discussion coming through the teaching learning area. We are proposing basically three dates going forward in this first uh set of dates. The first is on March the seventh, the second is on April the second, and the third is on April the thirtieth. All those meetings are from seven to nine o'clock at night. They're on the high school upper cafeteria. In the first meeting, basically, the, the purpose is uh just to begin to help people get some understanding about the history and comparison of calendars around the world. And we'll do some comparisons so that people can see what a calendars in France look like, what a calendars in other countries look like uh in terms of the length of the calendar, in terms of the number of days, in terms of the number of hours, and in terms of when various breaks are. Um, and then we also look at doing that same thing in the United States in terms of helping people to get some sense around that. So that people would really be looking at the fact that there are some multiple different types of calendars currently in place and schedules in place, which reflect what individual districts and individual states and individual countries believe is the best way to help students learn. Then our proposal is to give people a chance, again, broken into small groups, an opportunity to brainstorm the key components of a quality calendar and schedule that participants believe is best for students. is best for student learning. And so the idea would be that groups would come together, that in that group, basically, there would be a facilitator that would be chosen from among the group, there'd be a recorder, and there would be somebody to report out. And the idea would be they would capture all of the information in terms of any ideas that are shared by any of the members of the group, and at the end of the time, they would basically share those out. We would capture all of that data then for our use in the next two meetings. And then we'd also do some brainstorming and looking at what kind of level of involvement do different people want to have? Because we do know that some people could say, yes, I could handle doing a meeting a month to talk about these issues. Other people might be interested in doing more in-depth work. And so we actually could identify and want to try to identify both people who might be interested in a working group, where they might delve into more detail, or do they just want to be involved in a large group meeting? Then the next two meetings that we'd be looking at would be to come back again to share some research on calendar and schedule structures, and what impact those have on student learning. We'd be looking at the idea of what happens in terms of extending the school day, school year, looking at when breaks occur during the year. We'd be looking at, again, coming back and doing at least the meager research that's there in terms of looking at what happens when you provide more days prior to testing. We look at all the different kinds of pieces that are there, and also come back again to look at some of the history. Because I think the thing that most people don't know is that the concept of the nine-three, nine months on, three months off type of calendar that we have right now is a fairly new invention. And that even in the United States, for the most part, prior to the turn of the 20th century, we saw many rural districts that only went to school about six months a year, while many urban districts went to school 11 months or more, again, because of the needs of the communities that they were in. So we want to kind of talk about those pieces and do some discussing. We'll also take a look at Minnesota calendar history and the statutory requirements. And right now, there is a bill in the legislature right now that's being discussed in the House and potentially is going to be voted out of committee at some time this next week, looking again at what the restrictions are going to be on school start dates, and whether that will come back to being a district decision, or whether that will be maintained at the state level in terms of the beginning dates. We'd also then want to review the brainstormed input from March 7th, and identify what kinds of challenging parameters that there might be, that again, might be tied to current statutes or other pieces, and then begin to brainstorm some options for including those key components of a quality calendar in future calendars we might be looking at. And we'd follow up on that on April the 30th with another chance to come back and discuss that piece, to continue to look at what possible calendar options might be out there that people have interest in, to identify initial benefits and concerns for the options. And then I think at that time, we really have to determine if the options have sufficient merit to deserve either further refinement or, and possible presentation to the board in early fall, or are we going to need a lot more time to get there? But I think it's going to be important that over the course of the spring, we determine, is there enough interest in doing something different than what we're doing to have further discussions and really build those options out? Or are people very comfortable maintaining pieces the way they are? And again, looking at all the things that are tied to that. And then, based on the results of those three meetings, then we could, we would basically create the additional timeline as needed going forward. But I hope that this, and I think that this reflects what I understand the board's direction was to the administration in terms of beginning to take a look at these pieces, getting information out for people to look at, giving people an opportunity to really think about and discuss and brainstorm at the 30,000-foot level, and then begin to determine if there are modifications or ideas that they want to consider in terms of different options. So I guess what I, what obviously we're looking for here, and Mary and I especially, is before we get to that meeting on the 7th, are there things that we missed a vote on or not kind of factored into these initial discussions? Are there other things that you want to make sure get covered? Or is the direction or the speed of this not where you'd like it to be? Otherwise, we're going to try to go forward and have everything ready to go on the 7th. We've also asked Ellen to open up that meeting on the 7th, because I think it's also important for the chair to be sharing kind of the vision of where the board would like to see this discussion go, and what the level of involvement is at the community in terms of talking about options.
Okay. Board members, questions and comments? Rob?
I'm just thinking ahead beyond April 30th a little bit here, because we're just now about to approve next year's calendar, the 13th working calendar. And one of the problems we would face at any point is if we had the, there were the people who have made their reservations for August, and that was one of the main reasons that any district would have a hard time doing it the very next year because of those reservations. So we want to have the discussion on how we're going to set the 14-15 calendar enough in advance so that you don't run into those problems. So the question is, when would a 14, I mean, if what comes out of this is that we want to think about moving into August, when would those discussions about the actual calendar happen so that you could approve something and people would have time to react for their next year?
I think, and I've tried to kind of play out that longer timeline. My sense is if we get through these first three sessions, and there really is some interest in looking at some different, and I guess I do want to back up, because the calendar could be lots of different things. We could leave August alone. Maybe it's lengthening the year on the June side. Maybe it's actually leaving August alone, because that obviously was a significant concern for some people in terms of things that are kind of in place that at least at this point seem to be kind of chiseled in stone, like the state fair and FFA competitions, et cetera. So I think it's the idea of if there are pieces that people want to think about differently than we've been doing them before, and there's enough interest after those first three meetings, then the idea would be that potentially the working group would do some work over the summer months, so that really, coming back in September, we'd be ready to begin sharing with the board and the community about, here's some other options that we think should be considered. And really making that kind of decision in mid-fall, in terms of any significant changes that were going to be made. Knowing that, and especially depending on what's happening at the state level, we either, if we're doing an adjustment that changes the beginning, we still are tied to the guidelines that the state has for when they're doing things. But we'd be telling people significantly ahead of those deadlines that this is the directional beginning we're getting ready to go. I have no way at this point, Rob, of knowing whether there's a significant interest in doing that. I mean, obviously, as we heard from people during our activities in January, the specifics of what we laid out initially are not something that we had. People who were willing to come forward and say, I really want to look at doing this, although all of you I know got some emails going the other way after the fact. But my sense is there might be several different directions that people might go. And, you know, it could be looking at shorter breaks, but more breaks. It could, you know, that could be an option. It could be a longer year with trying to come up with ways to create more days at school totally. It might be changing, you know, the start and end dates. I think as we look at calendars around the world, our calendar is pretty different than most everybody else's in terms of operation. I don't think we're probably going to be into the Chinese calendar or schedule with the 7:30 to 5:00 a clock day, even if we do have a two-hour break in the middle of the day. But, you know, I think we want to lay all those pieces out for people to think about, because the flip side is, I'm guessing oftentimes for younger parents, especially if they're both working, having a school day that ran from the time they went to work to the time they came home, might actually be a beneficial situation. So it's, I think the planning would be if there's a sense at the end of April that there's a desire to look at some other options more seriously, then I think at that point we would do planning for over the summer with the idea of targeting, trying to come back and talk more specifically about options with a lot more detail early on in the fall, probably in September.
So then I'm just wondering also about the constraints of, I mean, one of the more effective things might be to have more days, but fewer hours in a day, which is, for example, a lot of European systems are longer school a year, but more breaks during the day. But then you, I think you run into constraints of the teacher's contract. So how would this work in with negotiating with the teachers?
Well, and obviously, I think that's going to have to be part of the discussion. This is a, this obviously is a negotiation year. And I think, I think as, we won't begin to really do much seriously with negotiations until after the session is over. But if there's some strong sentiment coming out at the end of those April meetings, I think that would be something we would have to talk about and discuss with them. You know, when you talk about the challenging parameters, that's one of the key challenges, is that there are structures that are in place that are very much tied to negotiated agreements. And remember, it's not just a negotiated agreement for teachers, it's also for other groups who work in the same schedule setting as teachers do. And, you know, I know that we've had, you know, some discussion of saying, well, gee, if you just shorten the day, you could add more days. At least in the current calendar structure right now, and in the current contract right now, just shortening the day does not allow value to add any days, because the contract would say, even if your day was a half an hour shorter, that's still a full day for the teachers. And that would be funded as such. So if we're headed in that direction, I think we have some serious discussions to have with staff about how might this be looked different. At the same time, I think, you know, the more information I read about the impact of summer slide on a significant portion of our population, and with the issues that we're seeing in terms of the disparity in terms of achievement levels between our Caucasian students in this district versus our Latino students or our students on free introduced lunch, we really need to be thinking about what we might do differently there to help support all of our kids. And what we, at least we know from the research that we do have about summer slide, is students in poverty and students of color and students of limited English proficiency tend to really struggle because of the loss of instruction for a full three months during the summer months before they come back into school. And although we've done some things with our summer programs that I think have been very beneficial, it's still not the same as classroom instruction. So you have questions, I don't have answers for yet, unfortunately, but I also, I think we would have a pathway to look at if we move through these first three sessions, and people are really saying, yeah, I think there really are some things I'd like to have us think about doing differently, then I think we have that direction to go. If after those first three sessions, people are saying, we're just not ready to look at any kind of significant change, then I think we know that too, and we basically put it to rest for a while.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question. Since the Skyler went out, to just talk about this plan, I haven't had any feedback, but have you had some feedback from...
So far, I think we've had two emails back. One from an individual saying, I'm planning to come to the meeting, and another one saying, I already told you I wanted you to change the calendar to the way you proposed. Why are you messing around with this? Just do it. So that shows you the diversity in the feelings as far as, it's kind of where people are right now. And that may be, you know, where we end up in the end, is that there's just enough. And as we know, the data coming out of the randomized sample survey would say to us, in the community, there's a real split in terms of, you know, people looking at, I really want to just leave it just the way it is, or I'd be willing to look at something different. Now, the difference is in this discussion, we're going to look at a lot of different ways that the calendar might come together. So, you know, again, it might be shorter days. It might, although again, we have the parameter issues, our things around, we don't have a number of days in Minnesota that we have to go to school. In fact, a couple of years ago, we were the only state in the country that didn't mandate either a number of days or a number of hours. Now the state mandates a number of hours of minimum instruction, but we are far above that number. They also used to mandate it based on how many days of school you had back in 1997, I think it was. And because that was the only way they could get at it. And it made for significant variation between some districts. We still have significant variation. We have districts with as few as 165 or 66 days of school, and as many as 178 days of school. And we also have people that build in time for snow days, and people that don't. And oftentimes, those nice long 178-day calendars lose a week in snow. And so I actually end up with less days than districts that don't have... All of those parameters are things, and I guess it's the idea of really helping to kind of broaden people's horizons about what do calendars look like, what are parameters that we're facing? And then thinking about, and coming back to, you know, what calendar would give us the best learning opportunities for every kid in our system? And is the calendar we have right now that counted? And if that's where people feel we are, great. If it's not, then we can look at some differences.
So one of the things that you had said was that you wanted to get from the board is if this is not the direction or...
Right. If I've missed the boat or didn't track on what you guys said you wanted from us? Because this actually, if you remember, was, I think was item four on Carrie's list of four things.
Four-point motion.
Yes, the four-point motion. And so I want to make sure that this does embody what you envisioned being point four of the motion, and what other board members agreed to as that part of the four-part motion.
Carrie?
Yes, it embodies it. What I really appreciate is just this effort to kind of reset the conversation, to open it wide up to, you know, calendars is no different than anything else we do in the schools, and it is subject to analysis to see if it can be improved. And I think, you know, the, looking at it, I appreciate that Mary's going to lead the discussion, because I think looking at it in terms of what's going to improve student learning, or what might improve student learning. I mean, it's possible that this is the one thing we do that is perfect and cannot it be improved in any way. I doubt that. I think that it can be improved, just like everything else we do, and I think if we're not taking a look at that, we're not doing our job. But I really like the focus on just looking at what are the components that might improve learning? that might improve learning. And, and then, you know, it's like an architect, you know, what are the things you want this building to accomplish? Then you figure out what structure to put on it. Because there's a million different ways you can set up a calendar that could meet the key components once we, you know, reach some kind of community consensus on what our values are in terms of, of student learning. So I, I really appreciate the, the effort to reset it. And I think this does accomplish that reset.
Anne?
I just want to add for the public that we really do want your input. And having community members come with their ideas will be really important for us. So I want to encourage.
Absolutely.
All stakeholders.
We, we have a big room, so we will take.
That's right.
Any number of people.
That's right.
Mary has a big voice because she has a playground voice.
Noel and Julie.
I support what you're proposing and look forward to it.
Julie?
Yeah, I just want to agree with Carrie and Noel as well and say that I support it. And I think as a progressive school district with a laser focus on student achievement, this is absolutely a conversation we have to have.
Good. Okay. Do you have anything?
I have nothing unique to say.
Okay, all right. I think you heard what you needed to hear.
Okay, very good. We will, we will roll forward.
One more thing, Noel?
I'll be unable to be at that meeting, but I do want to make sure that when you're, when you're looking for brainstorming ideas, we consider moving Christmas and New Years as well.
So you want me to be the Grinch that stole Christmas? And I'm just suggesting, somehow, I think, not so much. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We will move forward with that direction.
All right. Very good. We are now ready to move on to our first item for individual action, which is the school year calendar for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And board members, you had in your packet the calendar that we looked at, at our last board meeting. So I guess before we open it up for discussion, I would ask for a motion. The superintendent's recommendation is to approve this calendar. Is there a motion? Some of, moved by Julie, seconded by John. All right, opening that up for discussion.
Okay.
Well, I think, I guess I, I'll open it. That I think that this reflects, it's a pretty typical of what we have been doing in the past. We talked about a year ago that we were going to, knew that, that the Christmas break was going to need to be longer just because of where the holidays fell. And I appreciate the opportunity for the middle school teachers to be able to attend that conference on November eighth. I think that's a great opportunity. And I appreciate the opportunity that we potentially have for that pre-service assessment piece that, that's built in. So, I don't know, other comments or questions at this point? No? All right, very good. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the calendar as presented before you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right, we are ready to move on to our second item for individual action, which is the resolution requiring the administration to make recommendation regarding programming and staffing. Oh, sorry. I, oh, yes, sorry. I, I, I knew that would have one mess up. Okay, I'm not quite ready to go online, huh? All right. We're ready to move on to the second item, which is not that at all, is the revision to policy seven oh seven, which is the transportation of public school students. And Dr. Richardson, do you want to comment on that?
Yes. Policy seven oh seven, again, is, is our transportation of public school students. It's a fairly significant and lengthy policy. And why, we're bringing it to you at this time with the idea that because the modification is, is fairly minor to the policy, that this is something that we could do in a single reading as opposed to a typical strategy when we have significant changes in policy and we feel the need to provide it as an information item first, and then to provide it to you as a second reading. You'll notice that the only changes that are being proposed are on page seven of the policy. And simply what these two sub paragraphs basically share is the idea that in terms of transportation, if a, if a individual parent chooses to place a student in terms of a, of a care or treatment program, that the, the district needs to be notified in advance and have an opportunity to participate in that placement. And that it's reasonable for us as a school district to refuse or delay transportation if the administration has not had the opportunity to be involved in that. So in other words, what it does is it, it assures that there's discussion between the district and parents before a parent would unilaterally place a student outside the system into a program. The second piece is really tied to the idea that we have really worked hard over the last several years to really enhance the quality of opportunities available in our school district and through our joint work with the, with Rice County and our joint work with Faribault. And so the idea being here that if a placement that is, is appropriate for a student is available within our district or the shared work between us and Faribault in terms of the Cannon River Educational Center, that basically we would not, we would not be required to transport students to a district that, or to a program that was outside of that if there was a suitable program that was appropriate for the student within our district or between our district and Faribault. And that's really the only change in the policy from where we currently are. But we really think this is an important addition. And as we shared with the information that Gary had, Louis, our director of student services, had shared with you, he's seeing this now being implemented into a number of policies in other school districts. And I think believes that this puts us in line with other districts in terms of the requirements. So at that point, I would recommend to you that we would go ahead and approve this revision to policy seven oh seven.
Are you moving?
No.
You asked any questions?
I, I would like to add a small language.
Okay.
Issue into the conversation on page seven oh seven dash three. And.
Because we weren't recommending any changes in.
Right, but I, this one.
As you're doing it?
It popped out at me. And, and it's, it's not a, a very meaningful change, but I still think it, it's a little bit of work. Under number three bus stops, and in part B, we have sort of a parallel structure problem. So if a parent guardian is concerned about watching, it should be his or her child or their children at the bus stop, they need to walk with him, her, or them. So to, to make the, you know, make the agreement correct.
Children would make it work the simplest.
Children would make it the simplest because that his or her is kind of awkward. So I propose that we do that while we're at it.
Thank you to a fellow Englishman.
Yeah, well, that was one of those that just pops out at me. I figured we might as well do it right.
Well, if, if we're fixing, there's no reason not to fix that.
All right. So we, I guess before we have discussion, I guess I would ask for a motion to approve the languages presented in, in addition on seven oh seven hyphen three, number three bus stops, part B, the, the change in, which is not substantive, but it is.
It's grammatical.
Grammatical. Is there a motion? So moved by Julie?
Second.
Second by Anne? All right, comments, questions?
Is this something that has come up before that, or are we doing this as, because we anticipate it may come up?
It, I think we're looking at this right now because it has occurred in some other districts. And I think that's why Gary is suggesting this, is he is seeing that there have been some other districts where, excuse me, a parent has made a decision unilaterally without consulting with the, with the district to just place their child in an out of district placement. And then basically come back to the school district and said, you're responsible for transporting my child to X, Y, Z program regardless of whether you have a program within your district that, that makes, that fits the needs and is appropriate for this child. And so I think Gary's hope here is number one, to ensure that, that there is that conversation upfront. And number two, that if, if there is an appropriate program that is available, that, that obviously, you know, we would be recommending placement in that program. And so we would not be looking at providing transportation to another program if an appropriate program exists within our system or between our system and Faribault. So that's, and, and it has, to my knowledge, it has not been an issue yet here, but it has been an issue in, in other districts around, especially around.
Okay. Other questions? Rob?
I'm just interested in the legal language. Somebody who's been a lawyer could tell me this. But in E, the school district may establish reasonable restriction of transportation. And then later, it is reasonable for the school district to refuse or delay, you know, the added parts. I'm just wondering what the, how you define reasonable. I mean, how you make the decision that it's reasonable?
Well, typically, if I were to talk to lawyers about reasonable, they, they would talk about what a, a reasonable parent or reasonable adult would do given the situation. And so when we look at reasonableness, it's not arbitrary, it's not capricious. We didn't just say, we're just not going to transport you just because. But it's that we've discussed this, we've identified in an IEP that this is the, are the program needs of the child, and that we could, we have a program that fits these particular needs. That's typically what, what reasonable would be, I think, you know, from a legal perspective on special education issues is going to be. Is, is this something that is, fits the, the IEP needs of the student and addresses those needs appropriately?
Otherwise, you could ask an, an English major or a poet.
Yes. But I, we could also ask a lawyer, but lawyers do not normally give us advice. And it definitely would not be advice to find it from John.
My insurer would object.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
All right, other questions? Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the languages presented and the addition will change on page seven oh seven three. All those in favor of the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items in the consent grouping. And I'll remind board members there were a few personnel items that were added in the table filed. Anything, anyone wishes to pull from the consent group? Julie?
I don't want to, I necessarily pull anything, but I did want to talk about the contract agreement between the city and recreation services. And I think, didn't I, I recall possibly that when we signed the two thousand ten contract, we had taken a decrease from our previous contract? And I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You are correct.
And so when we have this two and a half percent increase, does that get us back to where we were prior to two thousand ten?
It does not.
Okay.
So we will actually still be below where we were at in two thousand ten?
But we're inching. We are inching our way.
We're inching our way back.
We, we took a decrease in two thousand ten, the fifteen percent decrease that every budget in the city took. We then took no increase for the first two years of that contract and then took a, a slight increase the third year.
Okay.
Which is this year for that contract. And now we are looking at a two and a half percent increase each year of this contract.
And I see that we have, we have accrued and have determined some efficiencies that does allow us to sort of recoup some of that. And then I'm assuming that all of the time that we are indicating that these different positions, that that's all been tracked and we're, we're closely aligned to the time that we say we are going to connect to the recreation services. So for example, like eighty-two percent of the secretary's time, twenty-five percent, obviously that's closely aligned to what.
That's right. We've tracked, like, for the registration, what percentages of our registrations and work are related to recreation.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So you, you don't need to pull it?
Oh, no, I just wanted to clarify where we were at from, because I know we had taken a decrease in two thousand ten. I was just wondering where we were at now with the increase that you were able to negotiate with us.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Well, then I, if there's nothing to be pulled, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent grouping. Moved by Noel?
Second.
Second by Anne? Any dis, no, we don't discuss this consent grouping. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are ready to move on to our item for information. Anne, is that, are you talking a little bit about the wellness?
I'm going to talk about that because you, as you noticed, Pam has escaped. Because she was concerned that it was at the very end of the agenda and she was trying to get some things to come out in front and has a little ways to go. So again, because this is first reading, you have additional weeks, obviously, to take much of this. The, the efforts Pam basically has reinstated at the Wellness Committee, brought together people to be involved in that. And again, that was an important piece for us because despite the fact that we had all the great intentions in the world as we implemented this initially, we've not had, we've not had a significant number of meetings of the Wellness Committee in the last couple of years. And so we really asked Pam to, to kind of take the bull by the horns and come back and take a, a look at, you know, how the Wellness Committee could operate, especially given, you know, the quality work that she's been doing in terms of looking at the nutritious meals, looking at strategies to increase student involvement and so on. And so the, the work that the Wellness Committee has done has been in terms of identifying areas where modifications were needed to the existing policy. And then you'll notice that, that there are some pieces where it's actually more comment as opposed to what new language would be. And that was why I was talking to Pam here before we started tonight. She's identified all the places where, you know, things either need to be changed, and she showed the changes. And in many cases, those are identifying, you know, the, the modifications now that it's child nutrition versus school food service, but also things that we've worked on through activities, concession stands, vending machines, a number of those pieces. And then there's some pieces where they've actually, you know, said we, we could take this piece out completely because it's now part of another program. So what we'll be coming back to you next time is, I've asked her to simply go back through here and give you a version without the commentary, but just what the actual language would be when we get done. We'd still have the strikeout pieces in place so you could see where things were struck. But for example, on five thirty-three dash five, item E, it says, it crosses out that entire section, says, this is different than any other policy document, should be eliminated. Well, obviously, that's not going to be in the final version. But she was trying to tell you, this is why we need to fix this particular piece. So I, I think that what they've done is to go through and really gotten some better detail to specific parts of the, the policy in terms of, of operationalizing and making sure it can work. She, they've also added an appendices that, that really looks at the, at the new healthy celebrations piece and whatever to really let people begin to think about some of those pieces that oftentimes are part of our school day, including this integration of this activity in this classroom, which is a big part of, again, the president's and the first lady's push in terms of taking the next steps here. So... are part of our school day, including this integration of this activity in this classroom, which is a big part of, again, the president's and the first lady's push in terms of taking the next steps here. So what we'd like to do is be able to come back to you and we'll give you kind of a final version with the strikeouts in place, but not including pieces that are just commentary for you for the final reading next time, if that's okay with everybody.
So when I was on the wellness committee and Pam did a terrific job of kind of leading the team through what we needed to revisit on the policy. And I did actually talk to a former board member who had been on the wellness committee when there was a lot more interaction and changes in policy. And the changes here, we are in a different place than the wellness committee and the programs here had been. We've come a long, long way with Pam's leadership and that board member felt like, you know, that there was not going to be any sort of, that there wasn't some sort of, you know, movement in the community that would get upset about any of the changes that we were talking about because they're really in line with all the terrific things and the community seems to be well aware of the work that's been done too.
And I think a big part of that is both Julie initially and then I think Pam over the last several years, has really made an effort to publicize the things that are happening and to try a lot of new and very creative strategies for giving kids opportunities to eat healthier. And a variety of options in the lunchroom, both at the secondary and the elementary level. And I think because of that, some of those initial concerns that I think people had when we had a nutrition program that was probably much less nutritious than it is now, and I think people had many more concerns about, you know, what kinds of food offerings. And I think she's also done a very good balancing act between looking at providing as much, as many options for school, or farm-to-school strategies, but also helping people understand there are some pieces that are not doable because the cost is so different in terms of some of the locally grown items. But I think she's also come back and wherever she can do locally grown at a cost that's competitive, I think she's right there with it. And I think that's really made a big difference, I think, in terms of how the community feels about the process. So again, we will come back with, again, a kind of a final cleanup version. It will still have the changes that are made, but it will just wipe out the, it won't be bold items that are simply discussions of this section shouldn't be mentioned.
Great.
I do have one other piece if you can. And just to share with you, I've been, I've been involved now with several meetings with legislators over the past couple of weeks. I did testify at the House and Senate last week. I'm also scheduled to go back in on Wednesday and testify before the Senate in terms of the equalization bills on Wednesday. Also met with Representative Klein today to talk about issues that are going on on the Washington side. And just want to share with you very briefly, just a couple of things I want you to be aware of. First, on the federal side, it's very important for people to understand that the sequestration issue is coming at us. And as of March 1, right now, nothing I'm hearing from Representative Klein is saying that they're going to get it fixed, that they're just, right now, they're in deadlock. So the important pieces I had already shared with him earlier on, the impact of what would happen if sequestration came in. You will think of seen if you saw the morning strip and whatever, there were some articles about the impact in terms of those pieces. What we believe will be the cuts we would be facing looking at the 2013, 14 year is somewhere in the neighborhood of approximately $113,000 cut. Most of that cut will be in IDEA. The problem, as you know, in IDEA however, is that if they cut funding in IDA, does not mean you can cut programming in IDEA. So we'll be looking at having to potentially either look at any reductions we can make there, or whether we are prepared to take dollars from the fund balance to address that piece. On Title I and Title II, in those areas, we physically will be reducing or needing to reduce programming if all this comes together. And again, it appears very likely that it's going there. Although this is not something that we thought was going to happen, it really appears right now that they are so deadlocked that they're going to use a meat ax as opposed to a scalpel to try to address the issues. What we don't know yet is whether there'll be any ability to tweak it at the state level in terms of exactly how they spend the dollars. So if there's a potential that they can shift our expenditures away from pieces that come directly to district classrooms, we don't know that yet. But I just want you to be aware that that piece is out there. I actually sent a letter and kind of a mock invoice to all of our legislative, federal legislators, just to show them the impact of all the pieces and to see what's going on there. It's important to know Minnesota probably gets, I think we are 49th out of 50th in terms of getting the least federal money in the country, but it still hurts. And as we talked to Representative Klein this morning, we talked about kind of the double whammy. The double whammy is 40 years of 94, 142 or IDEA that is, has always been promised to be funded at 40% of excess cost, has never gotten above 20, and is now down to about 17 and falling. Then tied to the second piece of that then is the sequestration, which will reduce additional dollars of federal money, but which will not eliminate one bit of the mandates. And so we really tried to work with him this morning to begin to think about, you know, is there any additional flexibility that can be provided, especially for thinking about maintenance of effort? And not in terms of saying, we want to reduce the things that kids need, but we shared a couple of examples. We shared the example of, it was only maybe three or four years ago that when a student needed an assistive voice device, what do they call it, matter, audio?
Well, you mean DynaBox.
DynaBox, which was about a $6,000 item. Today, we can do the same thing as the DynaBox with the use of an iPad and about a $450 piece of software. But right now, with maintenance of effort, we have to spend the entire $6,000 whether we need to have it to buy that device or not. So we're really trying to say to Klein and to others in the House and Senate, you need to open up that flexibility to say, as long as we're providing the programming, let us have some flexibility in terms of how we spend the dollars. Because otherwise, you know, I think the impact is going to be negative. So at the federal level, I think that's the key piece to kind of watch because the reality is, it appears that nothing else is going to be happening. ESEA is not moving forward. The waivers are all in place and I think from Representative Klein's perspective, because the waivers are in place, that that really took the wind out of the sails of trying to get ESEA reauthorized. And the problem is that the waiver is not perfect either. And so that's a whole issue that we're facing at the federal level. At the state level, the big discussions right now are the discussions over the governor's budget. I testified last week on the governor's budget and really tried to frame kind of three key pieces that were important for change in terms of the governor's budget. One was the whole issue about how much funding is in place in the first year for the base formula. Because right now, there's only a 1% increase in the base formula. That does not match inflation, nor does it do anything to begin to address kind of 20 years of underfunding in terms of education. As you've heard me say before, we're about, about $2,100 behind in terms of if we took , if we had the funding for K-12 education, we said, what would the money we got in 1991, 92 have bought? If we had put inflation on that, we would need to raise the current per pupil funding over $2,000 in order, just to keep us where we work. That's not to get ahead, that's just to keep us where we are. So that's a key piece that we're facing. The second piece is in terms of looking at the whole concept of equalization, which the governor's budget forgets altogether. And actually what they're proposing instead, the governor's budget is simply $500 per household as a rebate. The good thing is, it sounds as though both the House and Senate have said that's DOA, that part is DOA. And it's not that they're not wanting to do property tax relief, but they think that that's, almost feels like a Jesse check. And so I, what I'm going to be testifying on this next week will be at least two or three different bills that are currently going through, looking at different equalization strategies. And the idea being that in terms of putting that, the new equalization together, it's how do you support those districts that already spend more dollars for the same amount of operating level than other districts have to spend? And how do we begin getting that equalization in place? One bill, which is SCOE's bill, basically adds significantly to the, just to the amount of money that is put into that formula. The other bill basically is a bill that puts less money in, but it indexes, and that's Hoffman's bill, I believe, actually indexes it so that each time inflation goes up, each time the basic formula goes up, then the figure that's used to calculate the amount of equalization goes up at the same time. So we're going to want to try to, you know, to talk about both of those pieces going forward. The third piece we've really talked about is the whole issue of the funding needed to fully implement the new principal and teacher evaluation system. And as you have looked through or may have seen some of the information, they're talking about $22 per student. Well, if you're a QCOM school, you get $69 per student. And if you levy in addition to that, you could actually have gotten up to, I think, somewhere around $97 to $100 per pupil of additional funding. As you remember, we were not able to get our district to become a QCOM school and we tried on a couple of occasions, rooting with the association and could not reach agreement. But what, I think what we're arguing is, that's too much of a differential between the schools that are not in QCOM and the schools that are in terms of the funding that they have available to support putting together the right kind of evaluation process. So that's, I think, is going to also be a big piece. And I think it's something that the state is worth, is really taking a hard look at. The final piece that, just to be aware, as we're kind of trying to work through these pieces, is that the effort is to try to roll a lot more things into the base formula or into the compensatory formula. Rolling things into the base formula really works pretty well as long as they remember that they rolled it in. It's not new money, it's just rolling in. And in the case of some of the small dollars they're rolling in, it just now puts those in a much more protected format because they're actually in the formula. The part that's, we're struggling with is that they're wanting to roll in the extended time funding into the compensatory formula. And that will have a significant negative impact on us because our compensatory funding is much less than districts in the metro that have very high concentrations of poverty. And so we're really pushing back on that little piece too because it does not support our students. And obviously, that is the kind of funding that we use to support summer program and with summer plus that supports our after, after-school program that works with our prime time, works with all the other pieces that we do to help meet the needs of high needs kids outside the metro. So we're trying to work on kind of all those pieces at the same time. So I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that those pieces are out there and at least that I think we're getting some traction and that people are willing at least to listen right now. So although unfortunately, my, although I got about 30 minutes in the Senate, I got about three minutes in the House because I think they had, they had scheduled like 50 people to speak and so it was, tell us what, tell us what you want and get up and get out. But that's sometimes the way it goes in the legislature.
Can I ask your position on repayment of the shift?
Sure. And, you know, we've shared this with legislators already. Right now, we have adjusted to handle that shift. In other words, usually the big impact of a shift is in the first year it happens. Because in that year, you actually get less money in the year than you're supposed to get. You don't get 100% of your money. After the first year of the shift, however, it simply is changing the percentage. So as we go into this year, right now, we're getting 82% of the funding that's due to us this year, we're getting this year. And we're getting the other 18% of the funding will be held back into the following year. But we will get money from the previous year to make that up, so we'll have 100% of our funding coming in. What we don't have is, we don't have the cash behind it. So we have the ability to spend, we don't have the cash. Because as a district, we have been very frugal in terms of maintaining our fund balance. We have the money to cover the fact that we don't have cash behind it in terms of state aid coming in. We use our fund balance to cash flow and the money comes back to us. We're really encouraging the legislature to take a more measured approach and spread those dollars out and the repayment out over several years. We've actually seen a significant portion of the shift, again, the shift not being paid back, but at least getting back to the right percentage, just in this year alone because the economy's in better shape. The other thing I think in terms of us looking at the shift is that if they try to pay the entire shift back, then there's no money for additional funding for schools. And so then we look, maybe not even 1%, we look at no new dollars. And unfortunately, legislators as good as they are, and I think we have two people right now that very much understand us, the temptation will always be to say, look at all the new money we gave you. And people have to remember that that money is only, any money that's paid back in the shift is only paying back an IOU of money you already owed and was already due you in the past. And right now, you know, our encouragement is, if you have new money, put new money onto the formula, start to build that formula because you're so far behind, you've got to figure out a way to address that.
Thanks.
Gary?
Question about the principal evaluation?
Yes.
And the differential between what they're giving a non-QCOM school and QCOMs or what they're proposing to them. Is the evaluation markedly different between those two schools?
You mean what their evaluation is right now?
Well, what they're being asked to do in the.
No, actually, all districts are going to be asked to do exactly the same thing. We have the same criteria and standards and the choice in terms of the teacher evaluation for a year from next fall will either be to take the state default plan, which Matt and I and others have already gone and listened to and kind of dissected, or to write our own plan.
So what's the rationale for the difference?
Well, because with QCOM, remember what was happening with QCOM is part of it was going toward evaluation, the other part was going toward giving additional teacher incentive. And most of the money that. And most of the money that is in QCOM now is rolled into teachers' salaries with additional dollars being given to teachers who meet standards in terms of QCOM. Now, the, the money we're talking about in terms of need, we see just in terms of the additional staffing and support we're going to need to do the level of evaluation we're talking about. When we were at the meeting the other day, basically what they said to us is the expectation is that with every teacher that you have, regardless of tenure, regardless of seniority, whatever, you will have to, to interact with that teacher at least five times in an evaluation format during the course of each and every school year. Now, you won't have to do necessarily a summative evaluation every year, but you will have to do formative evaluation, you'll have to do other kinds of activities, and it has to be not only with the principal, but also with peer mentor or peer coach folks. And so what, what you're looking at is the need to have additional staff to make that happen. And if you remember back when we looked at QCOM, that was the place where it fell apart for our teachers, because they were really concerned about the fact that if, if we pulled the best and the brightest out to be the peer mentors, and, and then they were actually pulled away from the classroom, were we really enhancing the quality of instruction? Now, I, I think I could make an argument that, that if it's done in the appropriate way, getting your best and brightest to work with the rest of your staff makes good sense. But I think we also have to do it in a way that doesn't take our best and brightest away from the school, classroom, and students any more than we have. So all of those things are kind of all in the hopper right now. You know, I, obviously, I, I believe that, you know, the governor's approach in terms of, you know, proposing, you know, $350 million of new funding for education is not a bad thing. Yeah, as you remember, you can remember years when we were promised nothing. I, I think that in the end, that, you know, the, the amount of, that the governor's budgeted, if he can find strategies to help support the revenue side of it, is still beneficial. But I think there may be better ways to expend those dollars, and that'll be the things we'll be working with the legislature over the next couple of months. So I know that, that at least a couple of you have already been up and visited the Capitol. And again, as part of our C, Schools for Equity and Education parent group, and again, Anna and Julie really appreciate the fact that you guys have taken that, that piece on and, and also taken other parents with you so that they could go up and talk to legislators and get a chance to really see how sausage is made.
Well, it's really interesting.
It's a good thing.
We did make that, the big push about, you know, we don't want you to pay back the shift, we want new money, and, and that, they seem to be really tied to wanting to pay back the shift because they think that's what, that's what people want to see. That, and, and so that.
Well, I think it was the campaign promise, I think, from, from, and whether it would have been Republicans or Democrats, either one. And I think the only thing is, it just is the issue of people not understanding that the pain in the shift is the year the shift happens. There's less pain in the shift as you go forward. Now, the other reason that the shift has not been very painful this time is for those districts that, unlike us, have not had good fund balances and have had to borrow money, they, they've been able to borrow money at almost nothing.
Exactly.
And, and so they borrow, they can borrow money and, and, you know, through some fairly skillful investment and, and weaving their way through the arbitrage laws, they've basically been able to get it for almost nothing. And so, you know, it's not having a, even a negative impact really on most people that are, that are facing the fact that they don't have a fund balance to basically cover that, cover that. So.
John?
Is the expectation on the, the sequester, if, assuming that's what happens, that money will stop flowing to the district within the next three months? Or is it more likely something that's going to impact us for next year?
It's really for the 13-14 school year, John. So, but what it, what it would, would be is, as we get some final numbers coming out of state, then any decisions we need to make in terms of adjustments, in terms of staffing, would be for the 13-14 school year. And, you know, again, it's just the, the issue there that always in the past, whenever title dollars fluctuated, we've had to either reduce or increase staffing. You know, if we got more money, then we're able to, because basically, almost 100% of Title I money goes directly to buying staff. In terms of special ed, the issue is, even if they cut special ed dollars, we cannot reduce programming. And so I know that Gary and Cheryl will work on, but can we tweak and twist to see if we can be, be any more efficient? What we'll really be doing is, is having to, again, take dollars from the general fund to basically make sure we cover those costs.
Did you get any sense from Representative Klein as to whether they're willing to move it all and that making some improvements?
He at, at least seemed very willing to take that back and talk. Now, he's, what he's saying is, when he's talked to folks in the Senate, that's, it seems to be a real sticking point because it's all, and, and we actually talked to him quite a bit about the idea of trust. You know, is, really the message you're giving us in maintenance effort, of effort, is you don't trust us to provide the same quality program if we can do it more efficiently. So what you're doing is really encouraging inefficiency, and it really does come from, I think, a distrust in Washington that local school districts will use the money they have the most efficiently, and that if we can reduce the cost of special education without reducing the quality of programs, that somehow they don't believe we can do that, that we'd actually would cut, we'd cut a program to a student. And they're very concerned about that. I think he got it today, you know, because a number of people around the room spoke up about this being a significant issue for us. And it is really the double whammy right now, and that, that with sequestration and with, again, 40 years of inadequate special ed funding based on a mandate from the federal government that we do programs, you know, they, they, they really have never backed off at all on what's required. And in fact, we continue to get more requirements as individual school districts to do the work, which, again, is like with this policy that you just passed tonight, any place we can kind of clean up loopholes that, that will make sure that we don't spend dollars that we don't have to spend and still provide high-quality program, that we have the ability to say no. So I just wanted you to kind of be aware of, and, and I, I will try to, to kind of report out on a regular basis as we get through the rest of the year. I mean, things started really slowly this session, but it's, you know, a house on fire right now. So I have a feeling that I will be spending quite a bit of time in the Capitol. For some reason, I like to hear the sound of my voice. I think it's just because I'm, I'm the oldest fossil there, a lot of the oldest fossils.
Well, I think I would like to disagree with that. Anna will support that. I mean, it's really amazing when we interact with Dr. Richardson and other legislators in other districts. It's, everybody wants to know what.
What does Dr. Richardson think?
Yeah. So we appreciate the effort that you, that you put, not only towards Northville, but really statewide for kids, because it's really important, and it takes a lot of time and energy and extra effort on your part. And Anna and I have seen you in action, and you've seen how they flock to you and want you to be their spokesperson, and you do it very well, and we appreciate it.
Especially. The only thing I've seen people think spock, too, is like when there's Carrie on, on the roadway, you know, but.
Your pals in C, we always turn.
But, but, you know, I, I guess, as, as long as I have the opportunity to, to do that and, and people are willing to listen, I want to try to make sure that they hear a reasonable message going forward.
You are, you are a solid way to get a decent message.
Absolutely. So that, that's everything you ever wanted to know about the legislature and the feds, maybe even more than you wanted to hear.
That was great.
Thank you.
Good. Thanks for the update.
Thank you so much. All right. Future meetings. March 11th is our next board meeting. We only have one meeting in March for a regular school board meeting. And then Monday, April 8th, I will remind board members that prior to our next board meeting is the first calendar session, if you can attend, and that's on Thursday, March 7th. So, all right, is there a motion to adjourn? If I know.
Second.
Second if I am. All those in favor of adjourned meetings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.